Tuesday, August 26, 2025, meeting of the Aurora Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Marimelia?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Here.
Mayor Vay Resum?
Here. Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And going on to our flag salute, would you please join me in the flag salute? All right, for item five, closed session announcements, we have none. So for item five B, for brevity, I will move that all ordinances presented at the meeting shall be read in title only and all further readings be waived.
Second?
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with no opposition. And that takes us right to the good stuff. Mr. Downing, would you like to do the introduction and oath of office for our chief of police, Mr. Culver?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I made comments at the last council meeting, but I'll repeat those and then I'll ask Jessica to do the oath of office. And I believe we have a special presentation on the badge pinning tonight. So we are all here this evening to welcome our new chief of police, Mr. David Culver. Dave was selected following executive recruitment to serve as our next chief of police. Mr. Culver has over 17 years of law enforcement experience, having joined the city of Aurora Grande in 2019. He has held a number of positions throughout his career, but importantly, he embodies the qualities that our community has come to expect from the men and women of the Aurora Grande Police Department, including integrity, humility, commitment, trustworthiness, and compassion. And it is my pleasure as your city manager to introduce you to your chief of police, Mr. David Culver. And I'll ask Jessica to do the oath of office.
Okay, raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, David Culver.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Chief, before we recess for a special reception, would you like to say a few words? And that was the coolest thing I ever saw. You were the nicest guy.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get through this, so. First of all, Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for supporting City Manager Downing's recommendation for my position here. This will embark on a truly humbling experience for me, and it is not lost on the gravity of the moment, so I appreciate your support. City Manager Downing, thank you for your unwavering support of the police department as we have navigated through this process. The staff of the police department truly appreciates your support and your ongoing commitment to us. I'm a bit overwhelmed by the number of people here, so there are current partners, past partners, mentors of mine, former supervisors. They have all played a tremendous role in getting me here today, and if not for them, I wouldn't be standing before you. To my wife, Christina, you are my person, you have been there, you saw me through the academy, through writing of memos, you stood by while I ran out the door on numerous callouts, and I don't know the anguish that you went through, but I appreciate it, and I will never thank you enough. Addison, you are my best friend, and we're gonna leave it there. Thank you. Tonight, I'm joined by my in-laws, my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, Ross and Joanne. Thank you so much for your love and support, welcoming me into your family. I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for me. My mom and dad couldn't be here tonight due to health reasons, but they are watching remotely, and to them, thank you for instilling the work ethic in me and always telling me that if I followed my dreams, I could achieve whatever I set my mind to. And so, Mom and Dad, I appreciate it, thank you. To all of the officers of the Aurora Grande Police Department, more here than I thought. My role to them is gonna be simple. They will be my priority. My promise is to support and defend you. We'll ensure that they have the necessary tools and training that they need to be successful in the job, and that's the job of going out and making sure that we protect and defend the values that we cherish in Aurora Grande to the quality of life. The police department and AG, we will be based on three pillars of professionalism, accountability, and partnership. Professionalism, and every time the officer puts on the badge, whether they respond to an emergency or they're participating in a community event, it's how we show up and how we treat people. Accountability will be the foundation of trust for the department. We welcome the feedback, we will be transparent in our operations. Accountability is not about blame, but it's about ownership and growth, and doing the right thing even when no one is watching. And of course, partnerships. Partnerships and public safety is not the police job in and of itself. It belongs to all of us to make sure that we partner with our residents, our businesses, our schools, and our faith groups, and our city partners, to ensure that we listen to each other, and we build those relationships to create a safer, stronger, and more connected Aurora Grande. Together, we will ensure that Aurora Grande remains a safe place to live, to work, to play, to visit. So I can't thank everyone enough for this. Again, thank you all for being here tonight. I make the commitment to tell you that I'm gonna make mistakes, but we're gonna learn from those mistakes, we're gonna grow from those mistakes, and we will always put the city first and foremost in our actions as we move forward. So thank you so much to all of you for being here, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. You did it. You can let go now. And if I can say for the whole council, you and I have worked together for a long time. I know you to be all the things that City Manager Downing said, with all the adjectives and superlatives therein, but I also just know you to be just a genuinely great human being. So thank you for taking this on, thank you to all of you for being here. And now, we get to have a nice little reception. We've got some cake over here, so we're gonna take a short break, and then we'll enjoy celebrating Chief Culver, and then we will go on to the rest of the meeting after a few minutes. So enjoy, everyone, and for those of you watching at home, thank you so much. We'll be back in just a few minutes. All right, everyone, thank you very much for indulging us in the reception for Chief Culver. We will move on now to item six B, City Manager Communications. Mr. Downing?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. Matt Downing, your city manager. At the last council meeting, I did report regarding the Gifford Fire, and I'm very happy to say that since that time, the city has continued to remain away, or the fire has continued to remain away from the city. We are so grateful for all of the assistance from across the state on this incident. You will still see some trucks and fire personnel in and around the community as they do their mop up and get it to 100% contained, but we're very grateful for that. Including our own, our very own FCFA, we have an engine and five personnel that are still committed to the Gifford Fire, so we are appreciative for them as well, but they are anticipated to be released by the end of the week. Speaking of FCFA, in anticipation of longtime Aurora Grande Fire and FCFA Fire Captain Paul Quinlan's retirement in December, if any of you know Paul, he has announced that he's retiring in December. FCFA is currently recruiting for a firefighter with an application closing date of September 15th. So far, we have over 100 applications for that position, so keep them coming in. But that isn't the only position that we are recruiting for. The city is also recruiting for a lateral police officer, so you could work for Chief Culver, and a police trainee, so visit our website to learn more and apply online at governmentjobs.com. And then if you join the police department, you also get to do really cool things, like partner with our recreation services department to host a day in the park, so I mentioned this at the last council meeting. That was hosted on August 14th after the first day of school for our Paulding students. There was music, lawn games, a scavenger hunt, and even free ice cream by our wonderful partners at Hubalicious. We had close to 300 students attend that event, so it was a great success and everybody had a great time. So we're very appreciative to our recreation services department and our police department for that. And then, you know, if I bring up recreation services, I'm gonna talk about the summer concert series. So this Sunday, 1 to 3 at Heritage Square Park, we have Los Trace and their energetic mix of Latin salsa, cumbia. I Googled that earlier to make sure I knew how to pronounce it, and then I still messed it up. And then their Top 40 hits. So food this Sunday will be from Sidewalk Cafe and the aforementioned Hubalicious Sweet Shop, with Aurora Grande Rotary offering beer and wine, and the South County Youth Coalition will be the featured nonprofit this Sunday from 1 to 3. Following that, on September 7th, the Vintage Renegades will perform all of your rock, country, and pop favorites. The South County Historical Society will be slinging their famous hot dogs. If you've ever had one, they're delicious. Crave Mini Donuts will also satisfy your sweet tooth if you happen to have one of those, like I do, eating that piece of cake right before this. And if I'm reading this correctly, the Aurora Grande Rotary will be selling beer and wine, which I know is surprising to the council and to the community. It's a joke, because they always do. And then the featured nonprofit on the 7th is the Aurora Grande Senior Center, so again, keep coming out through our last concert, September 21st, so we'll have one other opportunity to hear all about what's coming up. And then, as I've said before, I certainly will say it again tonight, do you have one minute to help make your voice heard? Sign up for flash vote and share your opinions on local issues in quick anonymous surveys. It's fast, easy, and helps shape the decisions that impact your community. Join today and start making a difference one minute at a time. You can sign up by following the link on the city's website, or I say grab a flyer in the lobby, we don't have any flyers in the lobby, go to our website and search flash vote and it'll pop right up. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Let's check in with the council, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. This will take us to City Council Reports, item seven. It is the second meeting of our month, so we will report out here. I will go first. The Audit Committee has not met. CJPIA, this is the one time of year that I get to report this. So honestly, it's usually really, really great at that meeting, and they usually have new programs for me to tell you about, and there just isn't anything new. So it was a lovely drive, nice people. The one thing I did get from that is that the liability costs are going to be going up a little more than normal. They generally go up about 10 cents a year, they're going up about 80 cents per hundred dollars, and it's just due to what they call the nuclear verdict statewide, and we all share in those costs. So it's going up a little bit more than it normally does, but we are still well within the reasoning for being in the JPIA in the first place. They did give some reports about not only the return on their investments that they hold, kind of like we do every month, and we say where our general fund monies are sitting. The JPIA return is 2.66%, so very conservative. We also have what's called a reinsurance captive, and I think I reported out, we've had this only for a few years now, but it basically allows us to have our own investment vehicle that's been formed as a corporation in a different state, which allows us to diversify our holdings in a much different way. Under California law, it's very narrow, so we can expand that out just a little bit. It is incorporated in Utah, and the return we're getting on that is 7.23, so the average, it's not an equal amount going into both, but the average return now is at 4%, so that's pretty decent. And the one thing I'll add that really isn't germane to the city of Aurora Grande, but it is good news, they give awards every year, and while we didn't get one, out of the hundreds of cities and entities that are part of the CJPIA, for the liability program for municipal agencies with police exposure, the city of San Luis Obispo received that award, and for the workers' compensation program for municipal agencies with public safety exposure, the city of Morro Bay won that one. So that was really nice, that we had two cities in San Luis County get recognized. So that's it on that one. Five Seas Fire Authority has not met since I last reported. The mayor's meeting in August was held right here in Aurora Grande. It was lovely, it was, we did it at Neighbors, it was really, really nice, and all I can say is we moved on to a meeting after that, myself and Mr. Downing practically rolling like, I don't know, giant blueberries from Willy Wonka into the next meeting, it was a lot of food, but the conversation really kind of revolved around issues that were really more germane to the cities of Aurora- that were, were really more germane to the cities of, excuse me, Grover Beach and San Luis Obispo having to do with new housing laws that have to do with being near railroad tracks. So we, we didn't have a lot that had to do with AG, but it was lovely to host anyway. The sanitation district has met. It was just routine business, but the one thing I will report is we did our ribbon cutting and are so excited, and that redundancy project is behind us, or I should say really in front of us, because it's working, and it's working well, and everything's great. So all is well at the sanitation district. So with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot to report. Air Pollution Control District and Homeless Services Oversight Council, neither of them met since we've been here last. They both have upcoming meetings on September 17th, which I will go to and then report back. I did attend what was slated to be the South County Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Meeting, which was slated for August 14th, but it had been canceled, I think, last minute because of everybody starting school. Still nice to network a little, but, and that is the extent of government meetings I've attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Guthrie?
So no 3CE meeting and no, nothing to do with Economic Development Roundtable with Reach. I will, the IWMA did meet. Mostly this is we welcomed our new, to the first meeting, our new executive director, Kobe Sky. He's going to be great. We also have a new clerk of the board and approved two new employees, so big changes at the IWMA and personnel-wise. And not, not a lot else happened there. I will say they are going to bring back at the next meeting the technical assistant grants that we sent back to staff because it just really didn't feel like it was working right. Those are, we used it to install some, some water fountains that fill bottles at the, at the park and, and here. And there were, there were just some problems with, with some of the fairness issues and, and some of the ways that it was developed. So that is going to come back in September, so kind of looking forward to that. But that's all that was really significant there.
All right. Councilmember Maravilia?
I am really boring because both of mine did not meet since our last meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Summer is always pretty light. Councilmember Lo?
Hi, everyone. I will note that Slocog met on, in August, and there wasn't a lot to report on that, but I will, I would like to just highlight that Slocog is getting ready to do their 20, their programming for the 2026 year, step year, and they reported on the statements of interest and the, and those. So that's making a request for projects, and they acknowledged the receipt from the city for ATP improvements in the amount of 1.5 million, and another project to, for the East Grand Corridor improvements for 8 million. And they will be announcing and working through their requests and making recommendations to the board in October for the whole programming cycle. And the, and the other committees, the RAC, the Water Resource Advisory Committee, and the Zone Three Water Advisory Board did not meet.
All right. So that wraps up our City Council Reports, and this takes us to Community Comments and Suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to come speak, you can come to the podium or raise your hand in the online forum, and please keep your comments to one minute or less, and please address the council as one body.
I just heard Dan Dow, our district attorney, speak at a public meeting that tried to narrow down the speech to a minute, and he was speaking as a private citizen, so he retained his right to speak for three minutes, which I'll do now. I won't be three minutes, though. So I'm just following up on a proposed resolution that I submitted a few months ago about revoking your anti-American diversity, equity, and inclusion in social justice policies and your flag policy. And so obviously, it opens up the city to liability because it's against the law, and we could also lose funding from the federal government. So if someone could get back to me if there was any plans to do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? I'm seeing no one here. We'll check in with the city clerk.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Thank you very much. All right. So this takes us to item nine. This is our consent agenda, and tonight we have only a few items, nine A through nine F. So I will be stepping down for, or not participating, I suppose, for item nine D, and I have a question on nine F. So I'm asking the council to pull nine D for separate consideration. Does anyone else, else have anything that they would like to make comment on or ask a question? All right. Seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Again, this is on items nine A through nine F collectively. You may also speak on nine D if you choose. So if you'd like to speak on any of the items that start with item nine, please come, or number nine, please come forward at this time. And seeing no one here, we'll again check in with the city clerk.
There are still no members of the public on Zoom.
All right. So we'll bring this back to the council. So I'm going to skip nine D, and let me just ask a question about nine F. Mr. Pedradie, are you, so just quickly, if you might come to the microphone. The staff report says that there was a community input meeting on August 26, 2025 for a small business workshop. That's today. So obviously, that's not in our staff report. Can you just kind of give us a little itty-bitty update on that?
You bet. This morning, we had a economic development workshop for small businesses. Our consultant Nadelson Dale Group, who are subconsultant, subconsult for economic development for the general plan update, ran the presentation. We had a few folks here, really great question and conversations about small businesses, about what Aurora Grande could do to kind of spur economic development, growth, and barriers to economic development in the city. We'll also send out an email to, in our entire email list, of small businesses in the community, and try to get additional input on the four questions that the Nadelson Group asked at that time, just to kind of get a little more input on that level. So it was successful.
Great. Thank you very much. And seeing no follow-up questions. How about we entertain? Would the council like to, no, let me make sure that we, I did public comment, right? Okay, thank you. If the council, yeah, I did online. So would the council like to take that under consideration and remember to pull out nine D?
I move approval of nine A through nine F with the exception of nine D.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second any discussion? All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russum?
Yes. And if someone would consider nine D?
Okay. So thank you. So do we have to individually ask about public comment? No. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council on nine D? No. All right. So do we have a motion to approve nine D?
I'll move to approve nine D.
I'll second. If we could have a roll call?
Councilmember Maravilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
And I'm abstaining. All right. So just for clarity, item 10, we have no public hearings tonight, so that takes us right to our business items. The first one is an introduction of an ordinance amending various sections of Title II Administration Personnel of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code. And Ms. Mattson, Madam Clerk?
This one is mine. No presentation. We'll make this short. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight's item is an ordinance to update several sections in Title II of the municipal code to reflect the city's current organizational structure. Key changes include removing the residency requirement for the city manager, updating department functions to align with reorganizations that took place in 2021 and 2023, and delegating authority or for appointing or removing the chief of police solely to the city manager, consistent with other department head appointments. These updates are administrative in nature, have no financial impact, and are exempt from CEQA. So staff recommends that council introduce the ordinance as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. First, let's see if the council has any questions. Any questions to my left or to my right? All right. Then we will open up public comment for item 11A. Would anyone like to come forward on this? Seeing no one, we'll again check in with the city clerk.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
And then we'll close public comment, bring that back to the council for consideration and possible adoption. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move approval of the item. Second.
And? Oh, oh, sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to note, so for the motion maker in the second, the, the action item for approval would be to introduce the, the ordinance and find it exempt from CEQA, just to confirm?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second holds?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russum?
Yes. And that just land speed record takes us to 11B. Mr. Robeson, this is the sidewalk management program. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Bill Robeson, Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director. We are very excited to be able to present this information to your council. It's about our sidewalk management program. We get excited about these things. Our engineering division, especially from our Public Works Department, has been working very hard to quantify and gather data on our thousands of sidewalk displacements. So our city engineer is here to, Shannon Sweeney is here to present the information, and I will hand it over to her.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Shannon Sweeney. I'm city engineer. And yes, here to talk about the exciting topic of concrete with our sidewalk management program. Now, there is a little bit of background associated with this. Over the course of the nine, last nine years, we've spent an average of about $165,000 on sidewalk. A bunch of that, the numbers are a bit skewed because in fiscal year '24, a significant amount of money was spent doing the brickwork in the village. So that, excuse the numbers up a little bit, but that's the average. In November of '24, very excited to be able to say that sales tax measure E24 passed, which adds about estimated $6 million of general fund revenue. Back in January of 2025, staff reported the results of a community survey that indicated that community priorities were on infrastructure, including sidewalks and pavement. I presented the pavement, pavement management program back in April of 2025. At that time, I indicated that I'd be coming back with a sidewalk program in the summer. I think we're still in the summer. And so here I am today. At that time, we didn't have all the data, so I didn't feel comfortable presenting what we had at the time. In May of this year, a 10-year capital improvement program was presented. At that time, we guessed that we would need about half a million dollars a year to address our sidewalk work, and here to show you that, yeah, that number's pretty good. So. There are four objectives of our sidewalk program, the work that we did over the course of the last year. First one, let's fix what's broken. In order for us to do that, we had to define what was broken, which we have done. To address our current needs, our active transportation plan identified sidewalk gaps that can be included in the sidewalk management program. We wanted to develop mechanisms to reduce future damage. We quantified what the damage was caused by, and then that gives us the ability to say, how can we prevent some of this damage in the future, and then to determine the budget. So first thing we did was develop a sidewalk assessment. Somebody did walk the 89 miles of sidewalk and defined that we had approximately 2,200 displacements. I'm going to spend just a minute to talk about what defines a sidewalk deficiency. If concrete is cracked, we don't consider that deficiency. You'll see cracks if nothing's displaced, meaning there's no change in elevation, or if there's no hole, then we don't consider it a deficiency. We defined anything that was greater than half an inch as a problem, and then what we did was we separated them out by size to help us kind of wrap our arms around all 2,000 deficiencies. So you can see this table's broken down by size, half inch to through three quarter, three quarter to an inch, all the way up to over four inches. There's the number identified, the total area in square feet. That way, we could put a dollar amount to it, an average of about $35 per square foot. We also defined the number due to trees and the percent due to trees, and then a dollar amount total cost to repair based on that $35 per square foot. We haven't been sitting idly by, waiting for this presentation. So far, we've made 179 repairs. 100 of those, of the 300 that we identified as spot repairs have been completed. The picture down below the text is the example of a spot repair. If we've got a hole that's larger than a dime and deeper than half an inch, we can go through and fill it with what's called rockite. It's a concrete with an adhesive in it, so it doesn't just pop right back out. 100 of these have been done. We're concerned about these because somebody with a high heel or a small scooter wheel can have an accident with those. So happy to report that a third of those are already completed. There were 80 deficiencies to find just on Halcyon, and the Halcyon Complete Streets Project will address all of those. To the right, I have some pictures of some pretty glaring deficiencies that have been addressed. The first row, the before you see a three and a half inch, and then after, that's on West Branch in front of In-N-Out, and it got fixed last week. So, yeah, that's a, a big tripping hazard in a commercial area. For commercial businesses, we ask them to fix the concrete adjacent to their property if it is caused by trees, and this one was caused by a tree. So In-N-Out pulled out the tree and fixed the sidewalk. Likewise, on the pictures to the right, that's Elm and Fair Oaks. So a multifamily property. Their private tree was causing that damage. That was a six-inch displacement. As soon as we identified to them that needs, you know, our municipal code says you need to fix that. They came out within a couple of weeks. Fix that. You can, can you see that that's next to, that's next to a bus stop? That's Kitty Corner from Elm Street Park, and it's a pretty dense population there, so it's, that one's a really good one to fix. So out of those 13 we identified as greater than four inch, this one got fixed. Three of those 13 are part of the Halcyon Complete Streets, and we keep working our way through those. One of them is on Larch Mart next to Bank of America. So we're, we're just going to keep working through those until we, we get them fixed. Trees are the cause of about one in three of our problems. This is an example of a deficiency that is located on Traffic Way. This is a southern magnolia. One of the things we did as we were going through this program is we took a look at trees and their relationship with sidewalks. We pulled out our tree list from our engineering standards and found that a lot of them had a high root damage potential. The question is, well, why are we putting these trees in if we are trying to encourage people to walk on the sidewalks, and then we make the sidewalks not very walkable? So as part of this, we reviewed a resource called the Urban Forest Ecosystems Institute. Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, put this together. So I looked up every single tree on, that's in our engineering standards, said, okay, if it's got a high root damage potential, oh, and also, also weak limbs. If it's got weak limbs, we don't want a street tree with weak limbs, you know, because that's a, that's a safety problem. So we took this and identified 30 street trees that we do recommend to be adjacent to sidewalks. And so you'll see that as attachment. One, two, I don't remember which attachment it was. Either way, it's in your staff report for a truncated list of streets that should help do well in the future. Our active transportation plan identified 72 pedestrian improvements. 14 of those improvements were sidewalk gaps. These are two examples. This is Elm and Sunset, where you can see it's just sand. And then the next one, North Halcyon, that's across the street from the cemetery. Both of these sidewalk gaps are already in the works to be addressed. The one on the left at Elm and Sunset is part of our Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is the- Sunset is part of our highway safety improvement program, which is the bunch of concrete work that's planned to be done, including the crosswalk across from Strutter Park and some East Branch Street, Streetscape. And then North Halcyon, that's intended to be done as part of the Halcyon Complete Streets. While we were doing our field walk on that project, we also identified a portion of Dodson adjacent to Halcyon that can be done as part of Halcyon Complete Streets also. So, that's, you know, two and a portion of a third of our ATP projects that we're tackling as part of our sidewalk management program. So, as far as next steps go, we intend on prioritizing our sidewalk repair based on displacement size worst first. That, that doesn't mean that we're going to ignore other ones. For instance, the one on, in front of In-N-Out was only three and a half, you know, but we are still, that one was important to address because it's a popular place for people to walk. And then to update the engineering standards with the modified list of approved street trees, we're already working on updating our engineering standards. So, we'll fold that list into, into that recommended, recommended update. And to work on filling in those sidewalk gaps from the ATP, and then to work on the, the H-SIP and the Halcyon Complete Streets projects, which include doing some of those sidewalk gaps as well as some of those displacements. And then to review the program in five years, probably to send somebody walking on the 89 miles of sidewalk again, because, you know, sidewalk, it looks like it's stable, but over time, damage continues to happen. And the 10-year CIP has a half a million dollars a year to address these, and we've been able to identify that that should be sufficient funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's see if anyone has questions. Let's start over here. Do you have questions? Councilmember Lowe?
I do have a question. First of all, thank you for this really thorough and thoughtful evaluation. I really appreciate it. I just have one question. You mentioned, you mentioned that in commercial areas, there's a municipal, municipal code that, that says that we contact the property owner and they do the fix. Can you touch on the corollary for residential areas?
Certainly. So, staff is sensitive to the costs to replace concrete. And so, with residential properties, we take a nuanced approach, where if it's a private tree that's causing that damage, that we work with them to compel them to remove the tree that's causing the damage, and then we try to fold the concrete work into a project that we have going on so that we can get it done most cost-effectively without placing the entire financial burden of the repairs on the single-family homeowner.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Guthrie, any questions?
Yeah, so for the, where we have the sidewalk gaps, what, do we have or will we see a similar list of when we expect to be addressed? Knows at least the first five years worth? Or is that sort of a, when the, almost when the crew's in the area kind of thing?
So, the projects that we have going on have folded the adjacent sidewalk gaps into those projects. As far as identifying exactly when the other sidewalk gaps will be addressed, there are numerous challenges associated with them. Right-of-way is a big one. So, there are places where the right-of-way just doesn't exist, so we have to work with the property owners. Elm and Sunset has a right-of-way issue. We are going to actually have to come back and ask for them to dedicate some of their property to the city in order to accommodate that. So, I, we have not gone through the process of figuring out how exactly we're going to be able to do every single one of those. We have an idea of cost, but we're going to have to take them one by one, really evaluate what, how we're going to address those challenges to move forward. But that is certainly something that I can work on developing so we can put a timeframe together for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marvilia, any questions?
Yeah, I had just two. It's actually right along that same line. Are we planning on addressing all the displacements before we address all the gaps, like in total, like total?
No, they're not sequential.
Okay.
So, for instance, some of these gaps are being done concurrent with us fixing some of the displacements. They, they, they all have their unique challenges, their opportunities, so we will do them as efficiently as we can. And just now that we have a list, work through them, figure out how to prioritize them, figure out what the challenges are, and then.
Go from there.
Yeah.
With Elm and Sunset, you said that was already kind of allocated at this time. Do we have a timeframe for it?
Yes, we're folding it into the H-SIP project, which we plan on bidding out, just following the Traffic Way Bridge.
Oh, okay, so fairly soon.
Within this fiscal year.
Yeah, just knowing, I, I live in this particular neighborhood and see how many children are around this neighborhood, and how many are trying to walk to school without sufficient sidewalk structures. And that's one of my big concerns, especially in that area. We have the two, two elementary schools that really don't have a great way to get to them. So, I'm sure you are aware of that.
Yes, in fact, Elm and Sunset really did come up on our radar as being one of the higher priority locations because of the number of people who have indicated problems with getting through there.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protam? All right, I just have a few questions that came up during your presentation. So, similarly to other council members' questions, my question is, how are you going to prioritize the sidewalk displacements? In my head, you'd just start with the four inch and work backwards. But I know it's not, that's not exactly how you can do it. So, how are you prioritizing that?
Actually, I, we plan on prioritizing them based on worst first.
All right.
And, and tackling them as we work down. Now, again, when we find an opportunity, In-N-Out was willing to play along. So, we weren't going to say, no, I'm sorry, yours isn't that, we're not going to do that. So, i- if there are ones where we can get other people to fold it into something else, some of these will get fixed when people do building improvements. And we do, every time that there's a building permit, we look at the properties and say, sorry, you have a tree that's causing damage, or there's a displacement that needs to be fixed as a condition of approval. So, yeah, we are, we are constantly looking at opportuni, we're very opportunistic. Looking at opportunities to be able to get these addressed in any means possible.
So, on the over four inch, I, if I remember from your presentation, there's about nine of them left, and they're, that are in the Halcyon Complete Streets program? Or did I misunderstand that? Can you, can you explain what in there, do those numbers include the ones that are getting dealt with through Halcyon Complete Streets?
Yes.
So, how many of the, of the, like, three to four inch or over four inches are going to get dealt with in that plan?
Halcyon Complete Streets will deal with 80 that are over half inch. Four, three of them, three of them are bigger than four inch.
Okay, so then that wouldn't come out of our half million dollars a year because that's going to go from a different pot. Is that right?
Correct.
Oh, that, okay, that was the answer I wanted you to say?
Yes.
So, I'm excited about that?
Yes.
So, these two questions go together. My first question is, when are the engineering standard updates coming?
That's my next big project.
Yes, so.
So, I, you know, I was dreaming that I could get it done by the end of the year. Matt laughed at me.
That's, that's what I figured. That's a big deal.
Yeah, it, it, it's next. I, I, in my dreams, it'll be done by the end of the calendar year. How about we shoot for spring?
Okay. So, my question that, that is a piggyback on that, is the last page of the staff report. I have consulted this chart because I had trees in, on my property that were planted long before I owned the house, that have weak limbs, and they have been failing, and so we've been replacing them. So, I consulted this chart and made sure that what I planted was not only the right species, but the right subspecies or substance. So, I did the right, I believe, the right thing.
Yes.
Except that there's four that are, at least four that are going to be stricken from this. So, my concern is, because I just went to the city's website and consulted that chart and made sure I did the right thing, but if we don't update that before we update the standards, can't we just sort of update that chart as a matter of course? I mean, I don't think we really need to, can't, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is it's going to be months and months. We already know they're bad. Can we just update the chart?
I don't see.
I can answer that. We updated the chart about five years ago, and obviously, we need to do some more adjusting. And yes, we can, we can just bring that back as a quick cleanup of that chart and remove, I think it's a few more trees, but you're, you're exactly right, Mayor. There's some trees on there that we need to not have planted in the near future.
And we might not know, just, I mean, again, I'm, I'm always trying to play by the rules because I'm the one that makes the rules, so I try and do it right. But other people may be trying to do the same thing and not know that this is not an outdated chart. So, do you know which ones are going to get pulled off? Just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry, do I know which trees are going to get pulled off? The list that is included as an attachment is what I would recommend as the new list.
Oh, so it does, okay.
Thirty trees.
Okay, so the one I planted is still on there. So, that's good. All right, yeah, so I, I, I mean, I don't want to create staff work, but I think in some ways, the engineering standards, I'm not super, I don't want to say not super interested in that, but the part that's germane from the council's perspective is maybe this, and then you're going to tell us what the rest of it is. Yes, sir, you have a, a cat that ate the canary kind of look on your face.
Yeah, I've been grinning this whole time because that, I asked, my mic is hot, I asked Shannon that same question in reviewing the staff report. So, I think we can make that happen.
Excellent. I, I wonder if the rest of the council would like to see that happen?
Sure, I'd like to see that.
Okay, all right, just making sure that it's not just me. All right, that concludes my questions. Any that came up? All right, so we will open up public comment. If you'd like to comment on this item, please come forward at this time.
So, we already have a number of trees, a number of them are, that are going to get stricken. I guess my question is, as the standards get updated and the existing trees no longer fit the standard, you know, what, what's the replacement plan for those? Do they stay until the next time the sidewalk needs replacement? Or does this start becoming a, the trees need to go kind of deal? And are there plans to replace as they come out? Or will it be enough, be a case where once the tree is gone, there's no longer a tree?
And Alexandria, you know the drill. We'll do it at the end.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right, seeing no one, we'll check in with city clerks, see if anybody's joined us.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for comment and consideration. But before we do that, we will throw it over to, I guess, our city engineer to address the question from the public. It's a legit question.
Oh, and I'm happy to answer it. If a tree has not caused any damage, we will not pull it out. If a tree has caused damage, we will look at it, on, at it on a case-by-case basis. And we, we would replace with a tree on the street trees list if it were that we'd have to take that tree out. If the tree has caused no damage, we're, we're not going to pull it out.
Can you address how private property works and all of that, too?
If a, if we ask a homeowner to pull out a tree? I'm sorry, I need to ask the public works director if the tree needs to be put back if it's removed.
Is that the question? If, if, if the, if we require, yes, I think I'm asking my question. So, if, if a private party or a private property owner removes a tree that is damaging the sidewalk, and they agree to remove the tree, there is a replacement requirement. And that replacement requirement is to put a tree in from our approved tree list.
Thank you. So, in terms of the question from the public about the proactivity of that, we're not pulling trees just because they're not on the list anymore?
That's correct.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mayor Protam?
So, now that you brought up replacement trees, I'm hoping that doesn't mean a full grown tree. Just knowing how expensive they are for a homeowner to have to foot that bill.
That's a, that's a great question. We require a 15-gallon or larger. Some people get 24-inch box, but normally, they're a 15-gallon tree, which aren't as expensive.
All right. So, we have handled public comment. We have handled the questions, and so this brings us back to the council. Does anyone have comments to make or would like to make a motion? You said you had comments, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Yes.
No, just bravo for all the work and the insight and the determination to find every single way you can to figure out what's failing and replace things in a priority manner. So, thanks very much, everybody, for all your work.
And that is, thank you very much for reminding me. That's just a receipt, or give you direction. I think we, we all nodded approvingly. Sir?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, again, I, comprehensive reports, really appreciate it, and the only way to do it is to walk all the sidewalks. And, you know, I, I see many of them every day. So, so I really appreciate that. And, and, and I also understand about priority. I asked the question realizing that it really is, I mean, there are times when you're going to fix a three inch one, and there's going to be six littler ones down the way that you're going to do at the same time. So, I'm sure we'll be as efficient as possible there. On, on, on the trees, I, when, when we add the requirement that a tree be replaced, we're kind of begging the owner to say, no, I won't take it out. And I don't, I, I, because of the added expense of, of actually replacing the tree. So, I wonder if that's, if that's a hard rule, if that's something in the municipal code, if that's something that we would?
Well, for true replacement permits, there is a replacement requirement, and we are consistent, consistently requiring trees to be replaced when one is removed. So, and it's really hasn't been a problem. Most people don't really have a, an issue with that because a 15-gallon tree, you can get one of those at, for $80 or so, or 100 at the most. But I know that's a lot of money. But, you know, it also allows that tree to be taken out so that it doesn't do further damage to the sidewalk and the, the property owner doesn't incur even more cost.
All right, thank you.
Do you remember where Tree City?
All right. Do you have enough direction from the council? All right, thank you very much. So, we'll close item 11B, and that takes us to council communications, item 12. Does anyone have communications this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I had an exciting day on Saturday. I volunteered at the Day of Care fundraiser for Aurora Grande Hospital and Marion Medical Center, their cancer care fund car show.
Thank you.
Yes, and so, the mayor's or the Mayor Protam's award went to psychedelic lowrider called PsychSled. So, so I'd encourage you to look at my Instagram because I have like shots of about 11 of them. It was a pretty cool variety and obviously a really good cause, and just a really neat variety of folks and clubs that came out with all different cars. So, so I did.
Anyone else have council communications this evening?
Yes, on Friday, August 22nd, I attended a, a nice little ceremony here in the council chambers honoring Lisa Kawamura. She was given a Congressional Woman of the Year Award by, by our Congressman Salud Carballo. And I'd like to find out if we could just do something in, in reflection and honoring her similarly, just, just to reflect that, that honor. So, she was a, she was a successful candidate from over 100 folks who were nominated for this special award. It's quite nice.
So, the city manager already brought that up to me. So, do you want to go ahead and talk about what we, what we discussed?
Very quickly because it's not on the agenda, but yes, we will find a date in coordination with Ms. Kawamura to honor her with a commendation from the city as well.
That usually comes in the form of a mayor's commendation, but if, if, I, I'm happy to hand that to you. So, okay, great. Wonderful. Any other council communications? All right, then that takes us to our closed. All right, then that takes us to our closed session. I'll turn it over to our city attorney to announce that.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, there's one closed session agenda item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, title, City Attorney.
Thank you very much. So we will reconvene to open session after the closed session. And announcements of any reportable action taken in closed session will be made an open session and repeated at the beginning of the next regular city council meeting. So that will be two weeks from now if we, if the council has anything reportable or takes any reportable action. So with that.
And Madam Mayor, we adjourned to public comment.
Oh!
On closed session.
My mistake. All right, let's go ahead and do that. Let's open up public comment on item 13A. And seeing no one here, we'll check in and see if someone's joined us online.
There are no members of the public online.
All right, thank you for the reminder. We'll close public comment, and we'll adjourn to closed session. Thanks, everyone.